No.
Six o'clock here on August thirty, I resolve this meeting to order. First and foremost is public forum, do I have anything from the public? This is your chance to ask any questions, participate openly with the audience. We have a couple of hot topics within the debate.
Did you guys get the email about the?
I saw it.
Yes. That's been right.
Just making sure.
So what happens when they don't have that hundred grand?
Well, they can't feel they didn't pay for it. Some other way.
They'll muddle through. I get their point, though. They don't want to have their hands tied for the next ninety years or whatever. Yeah.
What? I think that that the historical commission, whatever that was that proves that. Is that a rule that they have or are they just someone's opinion?
The one about.
Hundred thousand dollar decline for the.
The land trust not, they're not going to accept the hundred thousand dollars to be towards the, towards the house. No, 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 this is money that had already been set aside.
No, they needed a hundred grand. We went to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
So created that. And now it's caught up in some sort of an issue where the, 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 the bank is going to subordinate, the banks aren't supposed to, banks are going to be in first position. It's not, that's not even, that's a nonstarter. Where should we get that from? What bank would subordinate like that? Yeah, that's when, that's when I read that. That was my first thought.
Well, that was the historical commission that was putting these restrictions on.
It was. One of them is that, that the town is going to come while the hundred K is going to come. In the, in the order, it's going to be first and it, the little five is not going to put.
Yeah, so they, it would put the land trust that tied to the town in this. That was way that would restrict anything that they could do with the property. And those are not terms I would want either.
Wouldn't they get?
Evolving and devolving for another years. People who've done projects with them. They just want to know their own rules have changed and that's the issue. I think that that's just an observation from other dealings. It's, it's the trust decision and. They've had multiple very generous donors to make the barn what it is today. And I suspect we'll have more in the stones.
I'm proud of them.
Oh, I would, I, I would have done the same thing.
We are in fact live reported tonight.
I, yeah. You know, they just, some of these, these people get so full of themselves and, you know, they. It's just, it's ridiculous, totally ridiculous. And what was it in the letter, I believe, I believe that David said that. They had notified him, they sent in the, the application. For the, the, you know, it's not the hall of bricks. And they didn't hear from him until, I think they sent him in, in October and they didn't hear from him until May or June, something like that.
It, it looks as though someone was deciding, yeah, I think we're just going to move out for sure. That's what that, that's how I read that.
So I just wanted to make sure you guys saw that.
That is on the radar. Anything else for public forum?
So we'll have another hundred K to.
Were there not bills that were tied to that hundred K?
Oh, that, I think that they, I think all those bills had been paid before, before, they never even took the money. Okay, they never even took the money. Now the, the town. So they, they got involved, the bill was paid and, you know, the project was done.
It was, it wasn't air bombed, because that's such a.
Yeah.
The, the C D A money couldn't be used for just anything. It has an air bomb to be the first assurance of them. It's a balance.
Um, Bob Nelson is not joining us tonight, but I think we do have a quorum for the four of us for the governance committee.
He has a question. Should someone serve on a committee if they can't remember whether they were sworn in?
Are you speaking rhetorically or personally?
You likely got something in the mail from the acting town clerk at the time.
It was a while ago, I know.
So I'm going to have us follow the agenda and then we'll have you guys call your meeting to order. So we covered public forum. Are there any appointments, Jake?
No.
No appointments. Uh, for new business, we have a joint session with the town governance committee to discuss the proposed town administrator bylaw. We have a discussion regarding town administrator job, job advertisement. Uh, we have an indemnification agreement for acting chief of police. This may result in a vote. Uh, we have an assignment of the M S four reporting duties to the town engineer. And then we have an executive session pursuant to national law, chapter thirty A. Twenty-one A clause three, strategy for contract negotiations for collective bargaining, police union. And we will not return to session, a regular meeting session after that. So with this, I would encourage the town governance committee to call their meeting to order.
I call the governance committee meeting to order. We have a quorum. We have Sue Solodakis, Ryan McLean, Mike Martin and myself. Missing a couple of people, but we're good.
And to give the other audience members background, as we are. Looking to ratify a town administrator bylaw, redundantable. Uh, this governance committee has been working steadfastly on identifying some other local communities to compare us against. And work within what our town has. Hopefully determine language for a town administrator position here in Dunstable. Uh, it's not currently a strong town administrator position, paraphrasing my own terms here, but. It's a role that needs structure, needs parameters. And as a town that's about to lose their third or fourth town administrator in the last handful of years here. We need some balance in our town and we need someone here to sit here. In a respected, well-funded, well-evaluated position. To serve at the residents and the board of selectmen for the town and the employees in this building who are looking for some other leaderships. I will leave it to the town governance committee to. Share their findings.
Well, I think, um, we've already come before this board to, I'm speaking from the governance committee right now, I'm reporting to the board. We have come before the board of selectmen months ago, I believe it was in February, we came forward with what we put forward, which. Um, was a bit of a change from what we thought we were going to start doing from the beginning, which was start with a charter. Um, after two years plus discussion and passionate out, we, um, decided to go forward and present to the board of selectmen. A bylaw. For a town administrator. Um, which was really what the meat of the whole charter was. Really, there was nothing else changed in that. Charter document, but we felt that we probably have a better chance going forward and get town acceptance by sort of taking baby steps and starting a bylaw, which is what we're familiar with. Um, we put forward that bylaw to the board and I think there was some concern. By some of the select board members on some of the information that was in there and it went on hold for a while. We brought it back again to be discussed and. Had it put forward to. Town council review and not by our normal person there, but it was sort of an interesting response from that council. Saying that they thought it was. Not legal, what we were providing, which. I'm not quite sure what they meant by it not being legal, whether it was simply being presented as a bylaw and not a special act bylaw is what was making it legal or not legal. Or were there actually things in the wording of this that he is considering to not be legal? So I have printed out and gone through. Aside from all the ones that we went through with the governance committee that were the basis for the drafting of our bylaw, which included several towns, but I think the bulk of it may have been West Boylston and Sunbury. Does that ring a bell? But I have one from Hubbardston, I have West Boylston, I have Douglas, I have North Reading and. The wordings in all of these are almost identical. So I, I can't see how that the wording of the bylaw is what's causing a problem. Um, we did get a response from our hired consultant who's been working with us for the two plus years on this. That did give the recommendation that perhaps we go forward with this as a special act bylaw that would have to go through legislature, just like. The charter would have to. But, and that would make it. More of a solid position and not. Not as cemented, you know, maybe not less cemented like a bylaw would be, because a bylaw can change without having to go through the whole legislative process. Um, so I think that would have been his recommendation to us if you're here tonight, but I do have it in writing as a response to the board. So I guess I, I, I put it back to the select board as to. Give light to the governance committee as to what it is that you're uncomfortable with.
Let me just, let me revisit that if I can. What, what we said was. We wanted the bylaw to have a legal review before we voted on it.
Yeah.
That was.
That was the more most recent.
And so from then to forward, it didn't happen until some period of time after that.
Yeah.
And I, I agree that Brian Fock was not the attorney of record. But when you read through Madison's. Attorney Madison's writings, he's taking mass general law and saying you violate this law. Here's the reason why.
And he's not giving a reason why.
No, he has, he had, he had an M G L thing in there.
Yes.
So he, this is what I would, this is what I would just mean, right? We can't have a town administrator in here that has responsibility without authority. It's just, the guy's going to fail. All the girls can fail, right? And so we got to fix that problem and somehow we got to put the wheels back on the wagon. It's a lack of expression. I haven't read all those bylaws. I read the one you sent me from North Reading. I, I, this is just me, right? I would go back and admire it to be crap, take that bylaw or those bylaws. And recraft this so that it reads correctly and will be able to be enacted without all of this.
This adjusts us.
It's going on.
This has been taken, it's been through the same process. He, it has been corrected.
I don't know what that, when you say this, I don't know what this.
This is the Dunstable town administrator bylaw.
Yeah, but that's the one that matters.
But he, what he's not being clear on. Is what is actually, what is, what in this is not legal, because the language in this, the only thing that's different.
Called out the, the issue with it. You just said, in his opinion, it was, it was, it could be Beagle writing.
Yeah.
However, there are countless numbers of towns and cities that have the exact same, so.
The wording is almost identical for many of these.
And I appreciate his input, but. It, it, in the Commonwealth, you know, Dunstable isn't, you know, we're just another town in the Commonwealth. And if other towns are finding the way to do this and solidify the time international, we got to get on the wagon, like you said, and we got to be followed.
I, I agree, but I, what I don't agree with is when I read that. And he takes M G L and says, you're in violation of these rules. If we don't vet that sufficiently. Uh, that's a problem. I, I, that's, that's, I, I would invite either him or Brian. Preferably Brian, because Brian's been with us a long time and not that we have a conflict factor in the book. I would ask Brian to review this and then take those bylaws that you have and recraft this so that, that. North Reading, Hubbardston and those other towns is what we have.
But I think our governance committee's already done that. Yeah, but they've worked on this for two and a half plus years to achieve that.
Right, but those bylaws may, those bylaws in those towns may be somewhat different. We don't understand that.
But I think that's with the expert of the, the consultant as well as some other leadership folks on that.
Right.
That governance committee to present to us now.
But they're looking, they're looking for guidance from us. We're just looking to get, we're looking to get this done in short order.
Well, technically they're looking for a vote.
We're looking for a vote.
To say, we, we advocate for this Dunstable town administrative bylaw as written.
I, I.
That's what I'd like to do tonight.
I wouldn't wave my hand about voting that true with Myerix writing the way it is. He clearly said. And, and he, and he was very emphatic about it. He goes, this bylaw, he said, I'm paraphrasing, this bylaw is illegal.
But, no, he wrote, unfortunately, I think much of what is set forth in the bylaw is not permissible. A town may not divest its board of selectmen of its executive or statutory authority obligations by bylaw. You, he's saying you can't do it by a bylaw. What we need is a special act bylaw. So I think he's talking about the method by which we're trying to accomplish this, not it itself. He's trying to say, this is how I interpret it, either needs to be through a charter, special act or a special act bylaw, not bylaw.
He's not saying that there's another option. He doesn't say that.
He, well, his, his, it is very brief for something that he, someone who was supposed to have gone through this five-page, six-page document. That's the only sentence that he gives any information on. He quotes the law a couple of times, but in going through these, the powers and responsibilities of. Well, Hubbard, we have an expert here from Hubbardston. The wording on the powers of the T A is almost identical to the powers of the T A in our administrative bylaw. So why would it be acceptable here and not acceptable here? It's simply the method in which it's been done.
The Dunstables bylaw, does it fall in line with Hubbardston's bylaw?
Right. Well, uh, most of them don't just have a bylaw, they have a special act bylaw.
Yeah.
So.
So it's very good to be having Don Tom talk before that someone said that Don Johnson, A Don Johnson. Tell me whether or not you think so. They didn't ask them to review what they were discussing. There's some question that's, do you think this is why? It's not done. Because normally you have, we can do this for, for your opinion, they can say, this section, this section, this section, you should remove this or add that.
That didn't.
That was, I don't know who would, when someone said. Hey, what do you think? Because that's the type of response that they got. Or they said, I don't really like this, can you find a way to? Make it not.
He. He wrote to David, I have reviewed the attached draft bylaw. I don't know what David, but I can't imagine Dave said anything different than please review this bylaw. So. But, um. I, I would want more clarity on this as to what he actually means or actually. You know, I, I think our goal tonight is to get the select board to vote, to put this onto town meeting. I think their stuff could still be. Corrected to make people more comfortable, whatever it is, but.
Do you still send the warrant to your town council?
Yeah, yeah.
For review.
Absolutely, yeah.
We do.
To the town court.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that?
Yes.
That would be like the fourth review of this tool, if you will.
But nevertheless.
Would be a thorough review process.
The next thing to do is to say, yes, we want to go forward to the intent.
Yes.
To qualify the T A.
And how, right, yeah.
And then as you go to the end of the whole warrant, it goes back to town council.
Correct.
And he's getting paid to make sure that he goes, I mean, we've been through. Articles that turned out not to do what they were intended to do because they're all written as this kind of bylaw and it was that kind of part.
Yeah.
And we had to tell council. This stuff.
Yeah.
There.
Well, they, so I, I'm willing to say that. If the county approves it. Does it still have to go over the attorney general?
Yeah.
They need to approve for the.
Yes.
Special.
Special act.
Special act.
Act by law, that's the legislature voting on, correct?
Right.
Does that still get attorney general review or?
Yes. I believe so.
Legislature, you've got a legislature, yeah. It gets legislative review.
I mean, it could be that sections of investor power are. Barring special acts.
And I think that's what he's trying to say is this can't be done by bylaw only is how I'm interpreting this, but.
According to the. Services said. Uh, sixty-five percent of town administrator power responsible for formally qualified by law, special path or town charter. So it could be second, maybe you're not allowed to, I don't know.
Yeah.
Signatory, signatory power from the executive, from the select board. But council can definitely say that. And if you want to do a special act bylaw, which is a fancy way to say small term.
Right. Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's my interpretation of what he's saying. I think we need clarity, but I do. But.
I, I would, when do we need to have this done by?
Well, again, the goal is.
For our next item.
We're, we're chatting about this tonight and I would like us to vote and approve that language. So that it gives us support to get it to the fall town meeting. It validates what our governance committee has done. And if we need another review process, as Sue pointed out, it will happen. And a few other different avenues. And no matter what, if it still needs to get signed by the legislature, about it, so the ways to go till we get there.
Okay, but it assures, it helps with our process of getting a new T A. At least they will see, oh, okay, this is what. You, you want. I see you're going through the moves to make this happen. We could even put it in the contract, you know, what the duty shall be. Um, but I, I think it, it shows a lot of.
I get that.
Yeah.
It's going to help us solidify that rule.
I get, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Not.
It's not.
Outlying their specific duties? No.
Because the, the, the specific duties are, there are.
That's our problem.
That's the problem.
We could, but that's, you know.
There's no power, but it's just words. It.
Well, I think.
But there's no backbone behind it.
You know, he would not, he or she would not have authority.
Yeah.
Their responsibility and no authority. You, you create a contract and say you've got X, Y and Z. And, and that's all well and good, but they don't have the authority to execute X, Y and Z, then you've put them in a position to fail.
My understanding too is that if, if we were to pass this simply as a bylaw, be it unlawful or not. The best way to shore it up, what the T A's position would be, would to outline the duties in a contract specifically, so that you have a contract and a bylaw. The contract actually has more teeth under those circumstances, because the bylaw could be changed at the next town meeting, but the contract is going to be good for the next three years, the terms of the person being here. If you have a special act bylaw or a special act charter, that is going to. Trump everything else. It's going, that provides the solidification of the position. And you wouldn't necessarily need the contract outlining the duties, because you have a legislative act that has shown. This is what we want this job to be. And that can't be changed at the next time you meet.
Okay.
I, I, that's my understanding.
I think all that makes good sense.
Yeah, it's just going to help us, like.
Right, yeah.
We, we need help.
Yeah.
And that's simply as a, as a government right now, so.
I, I think that makes good sense.
Okay.
To all entertain. A, a motion, if you will.
Well, is there anything else from our governance committee that would like to? Writing further input?
You have a question?
From the governance before we.
Oh, sorry, we'll see.
Okay, the other point, I'm not sure what your timeline is.
Yeah.
But one of the reasons that I want to see, let, just get this done and get it on the road, you know.
Yeah.
Even more. It's, we need to have some experience, a couple of. And, you know, um, we know, we have to do what we did massively. We had a lot of motivation and a lot of time, but to have a lot of people that had in. And, um, this is, this is the time for the change. You are giving us some authority. And I think you need to plan on something.
It doesn't exclude oversight by the board, though.
No.
So at the end of the day, we. Yeah.
To a lot of people.
We still have the ability to, to undo some decisions that are made. With this tool.
I mean, our biggest risk with this, and I cringe, I, I really cringe, is that we hire them first.
But you can still fire them.
We get that said.
No, I didn't, I get all, it's just what it takes to get there.
Yeah.
I know, that's our.
I get you.
You know, like. Trace, I know everyone uses Tracy as the, you know, elephant in the room, but like, that was the board's fault.
And we've had two very good people.
Yeah.
After that fact, so we are choosing more wisely. It's just unfortunate that the situation we're in, one, because we didn't have this in place to get someone that be willing to stay more than a six month into it. So.
Yeah.
That was in place, she would destroy the whole.
That, that's, that is exactly what.
Place, she was on board, that would have destroyed the town.
I disagree with you, Mike, because. Yeah.
She, she would, she would have made a.
And, but that would have not gone unchecked and we would have been, ever not going down this path. That was how many years ago? We've got to look forward and not keep going down that path. Honestly, it's very frustrating.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian, ask a question to Joan and then we'll. Move along. Just the. I agree that it's a change. But I don't think it is only a change for Dunstable. So the, the governance committee was asked. Was asked to provide some guidance to the now on why certain things exist, like why we have problems with, why we have side of. Plan, why we have a bunch of problems, a little mess. Maybe the governance committee discussed this and talked about how we can fix some of those problems. This is not new to any business, any school. The, the nation is under a constitution that was decided under much discussion, whatever, in organizing the government. So with the same Massachusetts. So with sixty-five percent of towns that have town administrators, there is this school out there that does the best power on the superintendent, because it's a run school system. Without some type of central authority, the school community oversight. However, there isn't a school community out there that doesn't have power of their. School district, then you can revoke the powers of government with a simple vote for the President of the United States.
Depends who it is.
You think that you said we invest in a business where you did not have organized government, where you did not have something that stated your values, did not say what the chief executive would do. And then you're going to pay your chief executive top dollar from all the people in the organization who you left over. So it's not, it's not whether or not we should have this argument, it's what should be, and I understand that that can be debated and should be debated as a result of that. But I would argue that in a left-wing official, the full authority has way more ability to cross standards and then point at officials who can be fired. Can't fire anyone that don't have. Sure. Sure.
You know, with the, with the planning board, you know, we. You know. Go forward, arrive in different bylaws. And, you know, once we get something. That it like looks of, it, it always went back to town council and town council would, you know, when he goes through it and he. Say, well, you need to add something here or you can take something away there and, you know, he actually do some work. This, I don't, I mean, I haven't, I don't know what he said, but it just seemed to me that. You know, he's, he's done nothing to, uh. You know, to let you know what the bylaw needs or, you know, doesn't need. And. You know, I just.
He, he didn't, he didn't do any of that. He wrote.
He didn't provide.
What he wrote, in, in my view, is a whole mistake. He said, this stops here. But he doesn't go on to elaborate what or what the corrective action. He, he didn't do that. And so what we're talking about here tonight is saying, okay, let's take this, send this back. Send it, we're, we're gonna put this out there, guys, please review it and see where it goes from there. I think that's probably inappropriate.
You sending it back to him?
What's gonna go to Myrick? Because every bylaw goes to them for review. So it's gonna go back to them and say, here you go, tell us, make sure this is copaesthetic.
At the warrant process.
At the warrant process, yes.
Cause just like the wetlands bylaw or compound or a planning bylaw gets, has to be reviewed by the warrant process before it can go to public in general. You know, interpretation. In the meantime. Whether it be a select board member and the governance committee can work together to socialize this. And continue to get some other public buy-in or public information sharing, whatever vehicle. We deem necessary to get other people. On board. Ideally. But for us, also at the meantime, I'll just keep using that word. We're gonna solidify the town administrator role for the town because. Before we know it, end of December is gonna be here and we're not gonna have a town administrator. Dave, our interim town administrator will be finishing his contract, means he's not able to continue on. So.
We said it for two minutes.
Uh, sometime in the fall, probably after.
October.
Yeah.
Before the nineteen.
Why? You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so anyways. We had the joint session of the town governance committee to discuss the proposed town administrator bylaw.
Let's, let's. So let's, let's move this forward.
Yeah, we could take a vote on that ideally if there's a motion to entertain that.
So the only. My only shortcoming with this is this is not a living document, doesn't have a date on it. So I'm just gonna reference.
Well, that was just my.
Do we have another one that's got a date on?
I don't, like, there's probably one in the email.
March tenth, twenty twenty-two, I believe, the date.
So I'm gonna put.
Number nineteen.
I think so.
I use number nineteen.
March ten.
That's not right, March ten? Yeah.
So we'll call this David. Okay, so that's kind of. It's a lot. All right, Mr. Chair, I move that the select board approve. The Dunstable Town Administrator bylaw. Um, that we have just dated for March tenth, twenty twenty-two. Five pages inclusive. Inclusive, and that we move this document to, um. The warrant for further review by town council last to its appropriate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, town governance committee.
Thank you.
This is a nice segue into.
Yeah.
Discussion regarding town administrator job advertisement. Is the governance committee gonna stick around or you guys? You wanna be a part of this discussion as well? I don't know if you wanna call your meeting to an end or you're all gonna stay for this.
I don't think we have any more business, do we? We didn't have anything else on the agenda, so we can. Motion to close. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Okay, was there a motion? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, great. Um. So for the select board, uh, discussion regarding town administrative job advertising. Um. Our interim TA, um, it's sort of, I think he emailed along some guidelines for dates and. Some resources for that, whether it be MMA and there's a couple others as well. Um. With this. Ideally, solidification of the town administrator bylaw, we can add some more teeth. To that, to job description and advertisement. Um, yeah, and I would like. I guess we could, I'd like to ask us to discuss that, but I don't think we set salary parameters at this point or anything, but. Think, uh, enable our town administrator to put out that advertisement for our town. And start collecting resumes and start. Process, it's about an eight to twelve week, six to eight. You know, we process to get someone interviewed, interviewed again.
Yeah.
We can go from there.
No, I agree. I think it's. Vitally important to get this ball rolling now.
Uh.
Um, I, I think there is, we've got a lot that's going on in this little town, despite what it seems, um. And David's been inundated with work as a part timer.
Yeah.
Absolutely inundated with work. He's supposed to be on vacation in Maine and he is still responding to emails that we were not anticipating him to even respond to.
Yeah.
So you're gonna, but he just is. Overwhelmed with the volume of responsibilities that he has.
Yeah. And on top of that, it's, you know, the, the shift in the town clerk position, yeah, there's a lot of, we got a lot of new faces in there, so I think. Um.
Yeah.
I'd like to encourage us to get that add up and then. Get them started while Dave's still finishing the, the twilight, let's say, of his contract.
Yeah.
Um, so we can sort of, that, that next person, male or female, whoever can, you know, hit the ground running right from. As soon as possible, to be brutally honest. Um, that'll take some budget fine tuning. Um. And we can catch up with our advisory folks and Dave to see how to hash that out, but. Uh. It's gonna take us a while to get somebody in here and I think we need to get them.
Yes.
You know, get he or she in there as possible, as quickly as possible. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll probably lean on Dave for some salary guidelines for what we're looking for. I think we're looking for a forty hour a week. Person. Um, you know, whether Fridays are remote day or whatever, except for the town halls pretty much close that day, but. You gotta get.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Ron, you. On board with that.
And, yeah.
Um, so I guess the real.
What is that, just one?
That is a gentleman trying to deliver a.
Yeah.
Um. So essentially, this will be to ask Dave to get the, get the ad, or get the ad out for our review. Um, if you have any questions with the ad, respond to him singularly and he will cycle it around to the rest of the board members, but we should get that up.
My God, that's quite a thing going on.
Yeah.
That's my backyard. It's on by my garden, it's right off, or is it French Street? That's where the smoke was coming from. I saw it driving over here. We could smell it, like, who's. Fucking hot dogs in your backyard right now. So this haze coming across our fields.
Yeah.
So are you gonna, you gonna talk with Dave about that charge?
I'll, I'll get Dave rolling on that. Um. There's actually, if you look at the MMA board, there's quite a few towns looking for a town administrator right now, so.
Oh.
Yeah, and they are well from the positions and, uh, we've got some competition out there, so, uh, we're only gonna. Be more attractive with this bylaw and some compensation. You know. Parameters that are strong there. Could be sort of turning a new leaf for the role for the town.
Right.
Yeah, so I'll get on that this week. Uh, next topic is an indemnification agreement for acting chief of police, Eric Gore. I have that in front of me. I think you're just looking at my signature, is that correct? And I'm gonna share with my colleagues just for their glance and I will sign next Saturday.
I think we, we already voted on this last.
Yeah, I think we did, we signed it, so.
So let's, let's put, I don't remember this, let's put this into motion. Just gonna date it, so. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we endorse the memorandum of understanding indemnification agreement. Provided to us today and we're gonna date this, um, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, and it identifies acting police chief Eric Gore. That's my motion.
August thirty-first? Today's the thirty.
Thirty of them, so, yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. So we all three of us will sign that? I see three lines there. And we'll have Eric sign it as well.
You'll say for now.
Excellent.
He did, I just, I haven't done a lot with it yet, so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I have, I signed it, I sent it to him, he said about thirty.
Okay.
I have a project that I was wanting.
Do you wanna sign that before he leaves?
Ryan, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Um. Yep. The other topic, assignment of MS four reporting duties to the town engineer. I know this is more likely in Leah's wheelhouse than my own understanding of the sport.
Kind of, I just know that we are obligated to make sure that we are meeting the MS four requirements and there are reporting. We, report documents that need to be submitted by a particular time of year. And then this is part of the problem is we don't really know. What is going on and our previous. Um, town engineer had someone who was working on it and she is no longer working. We don't have that same engineer. Person who was doing it, she is no longer the company that she is. Um, I know, uh, Dave and I, we all spoke with Dave about it early on in his tenure here. Um. And I think it's just, it would be better to put it into the hands of someone where it's their expertise, which would be our town engineer now, the oil.
Okay.
Tanner group, um, they're experts in this field and I think it's. It may have actually been discussed that they were gonna do it, Jake, weren't they? Wasn't that sort of part of the conversation with them initially? From, that they were gonna assist with MS four or?
The town engineer, uh, well, basically it started out with Leah asking a question.
Yeah.
Then I asked, you know, we knew all of this and.
Yeah.
So then we got town engineer involved and then basically came to light of Michelle's sign up, it's all left us. Um, at that point, Brian implied he wants her to take up the reporting and that's where it was. However, the town engineer noted this firm does provide the services to many of their other municipal clients and would be happy to pick up where he's signed that office.
Okay.
So it seemed like it would be a lot of data to do something Brian had agreed to and.
Yeah.
We know, it makes it easier. Yeah.
Okay.
They know what they're doing, they, that's, yeah, so.
Do we need to make a motion on that or is it just the delegation of, of responsibility for that by town administrator?
Probably no harm in making the motion anyway, just in case.
Closing loop.
Well, I will make a motion that we assign the MS four reporting duties to our town engineer.
And who is that?
Oil Tanner and.
It's a group, right?
Yeah.
The oil tear.
Yeah, it, that's the right group, but no harm.
Yeah.
Town is actually there.
Right, yeah.
Dave?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Are you in favor of that?
Second.
Yeah.
All of us, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Um.
Right, it's right. Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Next on our agenda is executive session, but we have some minutes to approve it. Anybody have a chance to review them?
I would, yeah, I didn't have any.
So this is the August second, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I'll move that we approve the August second, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we are now gonna enter executive session pursuant to master law chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one, A clause three. Strategy for contract negotiations for better bargaining, the police union. I thank our public audience members for coming. We will not be returning to regular session. Uh, roll call, right? That's a great one.
Yeah. Oh, quickly, this is Margaret.
I should see again. I think I have an eat up and even, but I have to answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been staying on top of that in this for permit, those five are crazy. Day like.
Yeah.